Big day in the county tomorrow.
Yep, as well as Friday, a bunch of school teachers did, so we're making progress for sure.
Yep.
Okay.
And we are live, Mayor Dynam.
I was gonna say, that being said, I can see that we are recording has started and it's 10 o'clock. So I will say, good morning. This is Tuesday, February 16th, 2021, 10 a.m. And this is the city council work session that had been moved from yesterday. We usually have these on Monday, but it was a holiday. So we're having our work session this morning and we will have our regularly scheduled city council meeting tonight at 6 p.m. The first thing on our work session agenda is to jump in with some of our new employee introductions. And this is always fun, even though we can't meet them in person yet. I look forward to that, but I will kick it over to Terry Wilcox to introduce our, some of our new city employees.
Good morning. Can everyone hear me?
Yeah, good morning.
All right, wonderful. So we have three new street division workers and we're just gonna start with them. Jim, do you mind introducing Josh?
Yeah, definitely. I can start off. So actually, the three streets guys that you'll be seeing, they are all new here. And they kind of complete our streets division. We're finally full, fully staffed, which has been a blessing, especially here recently with the amount of work we had over the weekend. These guys came in very handy and did a very good job. So I'll let them talk about themselves and kind of introduce them to you. We'll start off with Josh.
Hello, my name is Josh Sandoval, born and raised here in Montrose. I moved out of Montrose back in 2000 and I just came back last October. And I'm happy to be back in my hometown that I grew up in. I have a lot of family here in Montrose. My family heritage goes back a long ways here from the Julios to the Sandovals. So I'm happy to be back and happy to be a part of the city of Montrose.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to have you on the team.
Thank you.
All right, next I believe is Austin.
Hi, guys. My name's Austin Spear, born and raised in the eastern plains of Colorado. Grew up doing oil field construction. My brother actually works for the PD, Andrew Spear. It's kind of how I got introduced to the city of Montrose, everything. Yeah, I've just been working oil and gas, traveling around a lot. And my background kind of, I was a collegiate athlete for football and wrestling at Adam State University. And then I got a job offer in the oil field to go abroad. So I spent a couple of years in Brazil, Argentina, Uruguay, doing some exploratory drilling. Got tired of traveling, tired of being away from home. And like I said, my brother lives here, he's been here about eight years now. And yeah, I want to be closer to family and some longevity and stuff. So I'm trying to get settled into this area since Western Slope is the best side.
Great, welcome. Thanks for all your hard work lately. We know that's been busy for streets.
Yep, you're welcome.
And Derek.
Yes, hello. My name is Derek Herman. I've lived in Montrose for 45 years. I worked for City Market for 21 years. I've got oil and gas experience, three years doing well head. Laid off, went to programming, learning programming CNCs routers. Left that, worked for Free to Lay. Was actually gonna move to Arizona and my job got canceled due to COVID. So this was a good opportunity and I'm actually glad to be able to help and serve around the town of Montrose.
We're glad to have you.
Okay, I think Amy is here to introduce our next new employee, Ross.
Adam, thank you very much, Terry. So like Jim, I'm very excited because this is completing the planning division and filling out all the positions that we've had open. So it's really exciting for me. Ross actually is coming to us, he's a native, so he's from Montrose and is happy to be back in his hometown and will be our community engagement specialist. He has a lot of background in the nonprofit sector and working to build relationships with different organizations, community members and government agencies. So he's a perfect fit for this position. And we're just excited to have him on board. And I'll let you talk about yourself a little bit, Ross.
Hey, good morning, everyone. A pleasure to meet you all virtually. Like you mentioned, I have some background in the nonprofit world. I worked for almost six years at the Olympic Committee in a variety of positions. Spent the last year working in community outreach at Tri-County. And am, you know, glad to be back on the Western Slope after spending more than a decade in Colorado Springs. But again, looking forward to working with all of you.
Great. Ross, welcome. And I don't know if you remember, but we talked back when you and your sister were in high school about college choices, your mom hooked us up. And I don't know, I'm glad to see you have had a great career and are bringing all that energy and experience back to your hometown. That's super exciting.
I'm very excited to be back, to be back. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you very much. What a, what a great group. And I know they're gonna all hit the ground running because, as you all know, we're pretty busy here at the city of Montrose. Okay, we're gonna move straight into our discussion items this morning. Two, which is number two, the first one, construction contract authorization for Shaw construction. And I'm gonna turn this over to our public works manager, Jim Shide, and our police chief, Blaine Hall. Good morning.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. So yeah, we're talking about authorizing funds for the construction of the new police department, which we've been calling the Montrose Public Safety Complex. So we've reached a major milestone in this project. And that is where we're starting, where we're talking about awarding the construction portion of the project to Shaw's contract. So that's why we're here today. We're requesting authorization of those funds. And it would be for Shaw's contract as well as other costs associated with the project. And we'll, we'll talk through that more today. There were a few documents included in the packet and we'll go through those individually and try to explain as best we can how we've come to the request today. And so I'll start off by introducing the team that's here with us today. And then each of us will kind of go through a piece of the presentation and then we'll, we'll conclude with questions. So first off, Riley O'Brien is with us. He's with Dynamic Project Management. He is our owner's rep on the project. And he'll kind of get into the budget and the specifics with that and how we came to the dollar amount that is part of this request. And through the estimates that we've received so far. And we'll also review some of our budget summary log, which we included in the packet. Also, Ty Withy is with us. He is with Shaw Construction. So he is the project manager for our CMGC or our general contractor. And he'll talk about some of the market challenges that we've been working through. And some of the techniques we've used, like design assists to kind of mitigate some of those challenges. Then we have Shannon Powers. She is with the Blythe Group, which is our architect. And she is part of the design team. And she'll kind of go into some of the milestones of design and that how we've used the estimates through Shaw to help kind of guide the design through each of those milestones. And then of course, Blaine Hall, our police chief. He's also been very involved in the establishing the needs for the department and what exactly the building needs to accomplish, along with staying within a budget. So achieving both, the needs of the department, along with staying as budget conservative as we can. And so like I said, a large portion of this request today is for the construction contract that would go into Shaw's contract. And again, we'll get into that further. I think Riley will dive into that. This is continuing on the contract that we awarded to Shaw back in 2020, June of 2020. And so to this point, Shaw has been involved in the pre-con process. And that's again, getting, working with the design team closely to get pricing at each milestone so that we are on track through design and we don't, we don't end ultimately just hit a design and then figure out what it costs. We work together with the contractor to make sure our design is staying in line with the budget. And so anyway, I'll hand it off to each of the team members and we'll kind of go through a presentation mainly regarding the documents that are in the packet, so you can follow along with those. And so I'll start off with Riley. Go ahead and, go ahead, Riley.
Thanks, Jim. Thanks for the intro. The first document that I'm gonna be looking at is that design development budget. It's a one pager, got general condition site work and then a grand total at the bottom. So like with most budget documents, probably the most important item that people want to see is the bottom line. We're looking for an approval, as you probably saw in Jim's request, of $16,212,884. Now that includes the scope of the construction as currently designed based on the design development documents. So that's Shaw's total of $15,274,434. Within that, they are carrying a 5% estimating or escalation contingency. So as we get to 100% CD's construction documents, with the first bid pack is coming out tomorrow, that we will get that 100% construction document pricing off of about four weeks later. So that estimating escalation contingency works to kind of cover any changes between the design documents and the construction documents or increases in cost seen from the subcontractors who will price the design documents and the ones who will eventually be fully on board for the project. Also on this, you'll see there's a line for utilities. In the alley behind the existing PD, there are a number of utilities, along with a gas line and uncompagre that will need to be relocated and we will need to get new utilities connected to the building. So for that, we have budgeted $200,000. And then permit fees, we were able to get an estimate from the city for those permit fees. That's that $95,110. And then in addition to Shaw's contingency, we are carrying an owner contingency to help cover any unforeseen conditions. And that gets us to that total, just over $16 million. So this, this is kind of the top set. It's similar to what Jim just did on the Rotary Amphitheater, where we're approving the budget and then we will sign the contracts under that budget. So we'll be working to stay under that $16 million budget to, as we approve Shaw's contract and get the utilities signed up. So Shaw will be pricing the documents as they come out, getting bids from subcontractors as part of this CMGC process. And as they get bids for each of these trades, the goal is to get three bids for each phase. I think with the enthusiasm we've seen for this project, I don't think Shaw's gonna have an issue getting at least three bids for each trade. And then we'll look at those bids as a group and select the subcontractor based on their price and their qualifications. Also hoping to get as many local subcontractors involved on the project as long as they're able to submit a competitive price-wise and qualification-based proposal for the project. So yeah, we'll be working under that $16 million budget as we get the GMP guaranteed maximum price finalized with Shaw to kind of round out the rest of their contract. We have them signed up right now for pre-con services, pre-construction services. The fee that they're charging for that is $0, which was an appreciated move by Shaw. And so we have them signed up with two AIA contracts. And so it'll be, we'll be working towards that contract. But the GMP will essentially come in as a, as a change order to that contract to get us to the, to the project budget. Part of the process that we have been working on from the start of design is using, changing to another document. This budget status log document. And that's, that's really the value of this CMGC process is getting Shaw's insight on the constructibility and cost effectiveness of the design from the start. So from the very first design that, that Blythe put together, Shaw has been looking at opportunities for, for more cost-effective solutions or parts of the project that would be very beneficial to remove. So through that process, we've removed over a million dollars worth of either scope or... Some of that is captured in the alternate list where we pulled something out of the project that we then, as project risk goes down, could potentially add back in, depending on how pricing comes in on the, on the base scope of the project. Some examples are those seat walls at planners that's kind of making the, tying the, the site work around the new public safety complex more to those seat wall planners that you see across the street at City Hall. And then also there was an opportunity to add canopies at the secure parking to the south of the building, as well as PD panels, but that was a high dollar item. So we initially pulled that out of the project scope to keep us tracking on budget. But if we're, if we're coming in under our projected budgets, we would have the opportunity to add that back later in the project based on the timing of how that will be installed. This process of getting the budget approved off of design development, Dave, do you have a question?
Yes. Would the adding back in some of those components be taken out of both the contingency fee and the owner's contingency fee? Or is that gonna be added back in based on other budgetary adjustments?
Yeah, it'd be funded out of one of those, either the contractor's contingency or the owner's contingency, depending on where we are in the project. I think typically, but based on these items, we'd be funding those out of the, out of the owner's contingency that we were looking at on that first sheet.
Thank you.
Yeah. So this process of getting the budget approved off of the design development documents really helps streamline the approval of Shaw's contract documents because they'll be coming through with pricing for bid package one to get those subcontractors signed up earlier to get them started so we can get in the ground, get the fence up April, April 12th. And so having, having this approved and not having to go through this council approval process for each bid package and just working towards that top set number from the start makes us be able to be a lot more streamlined as we, as we approve those subcontractors specifically for their scopes of work. And with that, that streamlining, we were able to give Blythe another week to work on the design. They were coming down to the wire and having a little more time really helps with the quality of the documents and helps avoid requests for information, RFIs, from Shaw during construction and help get better documents out to subcontract, get the, get the best price from the start. So with that, I'll hand it off to Ty with Shaw Construction.
Thanks, Riley. I'm Ty Withy, Shaw Construction. I'm the construction manager. So I oversee the entire project all the way through pre-construction, through construction and all the way into warranty. So I'm the one that you'll see from day one all the way to the end. So as Jim mentioned, I'll talk a little bit about, you know, kind of the market challenges that we're seeing right now in the construction industry and kind of that market volatility and what we're trying to do to help the project and the costs and help mitigate that. So right now, you may or may not know, but the, the market is extremely volatile in terms of commodities. You know, steel, sheet metal, wood, rebar, all that has kind of gone nuts in the last few months. And, you know, a lot of us can see that if you just go into Home Depot and you look at a sheet of plywood. Sheet of plywood, June of last year, June of 2020, we, we can buy, because we buy wholesale, we could buy it at, you know, eight to nine dollars a sheet. Right now, it's an all-time high at over $30 a sheet for plywood. And so we don't have a lot of wood on this project, but the, the issue we're seeing is with the COVID and the, the manufacturers and that have gotten shut down over the last year, they're at a, a lower capacity for production. But there's a huge demand in construction right now. There's a lot of projects going on. So across the board, we're, you know, we're seeing an increase. An example is a, a project we have, we locked in a steel building in Gunnison back in late November, early December. We locked that in for pricing and since then, there's been a five separate price increases that if we wouldn't have locked that in, that building would have been, would have been hit. And it, it accounted for almost a 30% increase just since December. And so what we're trying to do is help the project, you know, and stay on budget. But how do we, how do we help mitigate some of these? And so we're talking to a bunch of our suppliers and our subcontractors on, you know, how to, how to, how to, you know, get this and maybe lock in some pricing for this project, although we don't have a lot of, you know, we don't have the final drawings yet, but how can we help get some things locked in? And one of the, an example of this is, you know, the, the deep foundation, the helical screw piles that we're gonna be putting into this project. We found out that one of our subcontractors had an excess inventory. And so when we priced it in December, we found out he had 70% of, of what we need in inventory here in Grand Junction. And so what that resulted in is his price was about $100,000 less than the other four people that priced that project. And so what we've asked him to do is we've asked him, although we couldn't make a commitment to him, we've asked him to hold that for us, for this project. And that is one thing that, you know, by approving this budget and maybe, you know, allowing the, the approval process of each package to go faster, we'll be allowed to make a commitment to that subcontractor so that he's not kind of, you know, hoping that we make a commitment to him, we can actual, you know, write him a letter of intent and have him, you know, truly hold that for this project and save the, the project some money. We, we're trying to do that with a few other people as well. You know, we're seeing PVC has gone up quite a bit, you know, sheet metal and then just manufacturers. We're doing a project right now where the mechanical equipment is just, can't be produced, you know, to the quantity that's needed. So we're seeing extended lead times, but we're also seeing, you know, sheet metal pricing go up. I have a, if I can share my screen, I have a, just an example of a letter that, just to show you guys what, what we're seeing in the market. But so this, this is from, this is from MBCI and MBCI is basically a, a metal roofing, metal panels. You know, if you see on the outside of a building, you've got the ACM metal panels that go on a building. These guys produce a lot of that. And, you know, we just got this at the end of January. And I highlighted a couple of areas, just so you guys can see what we're seeing is, you know, they won't even let us order this material or they won't even give us a price for the material unless we're ready to order it within the next couple of weeks. And so it, it makes it kind of difficult to get pricing. But as you can see, you know, their structural side is going up 24%, their panels are eight, their trims are 8%. And these are basically going up on a monthly, on a monthly basis. And if, if it's a material that we don't need for, you know, you know, some months down the road, they won't even give us a price. They're just telling us to call their, their, you know, customer service teams and they'll try to work out some, some deal with us. But just wanted to show you kind of example of what, of what we're dealing with there and what we're trying to mitigate. And the, the best thing about it is this, this, this approval process will help us streamline that and help, you know, as we get prices from subs and we can tell them that, hey, yes, we can lock this in and we can give you a letter of intent as soon as we're done evaluating the price. It, it helps them then get us a price and so we can see if, if we're maintaining the budget and where we're tracking. So that's, that's just one of the things, just to talk about the market conditions. The other thing we're trying to do is we've, we've hired a couple subcontractors on a design assist. Maybe mainly some of the big subcontractors, mechanical, electrical, so your HVAC, the plumbing and electrical. And we're, we're seeing this more and more in the market and in our industry. We're probably over 50% of our projects, we're doing this design, a design assist approach. And the reason is, is the, the past, the way projects have always worked is you design it, you get to 100%. You send it out for a pricing, you get your bids back. And then typically, you know, as of late, all these projects are over budget. And then it's, hey, how do we get back to budget? And we have to go through a, a big value engineering effort and we're able to get it back down. But then what people don't see is that then causes the design team to have to redesign. And so it, it puts them through a redesign process and they, they end up having more fees for redesigning. So the design assist approach, what we do is we, at the DD level, we had these guys competitively priced it. And we went through and evaluated each one of them. And then we, we did a pre-qualification, checked their, their qualifications, checked their financials and everything. And what we do is we ask them if they'd be interested in a design assist approach. And what that does is we bring them on kind of an agreement and for a fee. But most of those guys, most of the subcontractors will waive that fee as long as they get to do the project. And so what we do is we, we set a budget with them, we set a fee with them. And then they help us and they start joining in on design meetings with the mechanical and electrical engineers. And, and what they do is they're allowed to give real-time feedback on the market conditions. But if the engineer is looking to have a certain manufacturer or a certain piece of equipment on the project and maybe that, the subcontractor has a different manufacturer or a different piece of equipment that gives the same quality, the same performance, but can be purchased at a lower rate, we're allowed to give that feedback and get that incorporated into the project earlier, rather than waiting till everything's done and then, and then price it and find out we have a problem. Part of the design assist approach that we do is that sub is then required to give us a final price when the final package comes out. And as long as they stay within the budget we established, we usually, they get to build the project. If they then, at the end of the day, come in higher than the budget that we established and maybe at no fault of theirs, if some things were added to the project, you know, we then adjust the budget a little bit. But if, if it was, you know, if it was something where, you know, they, they just missed their mark and they didn't price it, you know, and hit their budget, then the city and us Shaw reserve the right to go out to a competitive market and price them. And the reason we set that fee is we don't want them to, to then come back to the city or against us and say they were, you know, unjustly enriched by it. So we then pay them that fee for their service that they did. But what that does is that allows, what we're seeing on a couple of projects is we're, we're saving anywhere from 5 to 10% on the project just by, by going through this project, this process with a design assist approach and having them on early in the process. So but I think, I think that's really kind of what I wanted to talk about, just to give you guys kind of the market conditions and some of the things we're trying to do to help mitigate and streamline this budget process. And, you know, giving, allowing this to be approved and, and kind of lock in some of these prices as, as they come in is, is gonna be kind of, you know, a, a good deal. And it'll help the project, you know, a bunch to save costs just because we're not sure what's gonna happen over the next couple of months with the price increases. All indication, we just got a call this morning that the, the wood, you know, although it's not on this project, but it's similar to other commodities, is the wood is, you know, if, if, if a supplier doesn't normally sell to us, they're now, they're not gonna sell to anyone that they don't normally sell to, just because it's becoming that critical. Everyone is being kind of allocated a certain amount of materials that they're allowed to sell just because of the, the demand in the market right now. So thank you very much for your time today. And you're not happy to answer any questions you guys have either now or if it's later on in the, in the meeting, if you need to. But if there's any questions, I can answer those. If not... But, uh, if there's any questions, I can answer those. If not, I think Shannon is, uh, going to give you some stuff on the design side.
Hey.
Thank you. Good morning, Shannon.
Good morning. Thank you so much. Thanks, Ty. Appreciate it. So yeah, so I've been, uh, I, I work on the design side of things. If you recall, I believe back in the beginning of November, uh, my mentor, Peter Eisnogel had presented to the council, sort of our projects, uh, update, uh, back at the time. So what I'm going to do today is I'm just going to sort of walk you through kind of our design process and, and where we are currently. Um, so we picked up this project back in August. We received some conceptual drawings from the design architect, M W L. And they had worked really closely with the, uh, P P D team to make sure that this building that is, you know, going to be a, you know, fifty to a hundred year old, um, building, uh, was really going to work for the, the needs of the P D staff. So, uh, we picked up those conceptual drawings. We then headed into our first phase of design, which we call schematic design. And one of our main goals of that was to really give the building some Montrose character. So we took our floor plans that we have, we, you know, provided a three D life to it. And we really tried to work with the whole downtown aesthetic, you know, keeping in mind that we're right across from City Hall and a very, uh, a very awesome location, um, and, and really kind of making sure that, uh, the P D looks official, strong, welcoming, um, and everything that, uh, would fit with that, uh, Montrose character. So from that, we were able to provide Shaw some drawings and they, um, were then starting their first schematic design cost estimate. And that took a couple of weeks after that, we, uh, then go into our design development phase. And that sort of began with that, um, S D cost estimate. And like Riley was mentioning, um, we sort of took a look at the itemized, um, you know, breakdown by different, um, disciplines and materials on where we were with our budget. And we really started to make that list of wish list items that we call alternates, um, that, that, that helped to manage the budget. And then that, that process really kind of lets us know like where we were a little over, where we were a little under. And then what kind of moves we could make. I always like to think of them as chess moves. What kind of moves we can make to really optimize the building for its functionality without sacrificing any fundamental needs. So, um, and then at that phase two, we're also able to present, um, some drawings and the looks of the building, not only to the Montrose P D staff to kind of, you know, um, get their feedback for, um, you know, I mean, this is the building that they're going to be using on a daily basis. We really wanted to, you know, hear what they were thinking, um, to make sure that we're designing for everyone's needs. We're also then able to hear back from the community and overall that was, that was a, a good, uh, a good day. So we appreciate everyone's time that, that did that. So at the end of our design development phase, we did a similar thing. Uh, Shaw took our drawings, which at that point in time, we had integrated a lot more systems. So in D D, we really start to look at our mechanical, electrical, plumbing s- systems and how we're really going to give this building like a functional life. It's got to be a living, breathing thing. So they were able to provide another, um, D D cost estimate, which I believe is what is being presented today. And then that, um, kind of kicks off our construction document phase. And so again, at the beginning of our construction documents, we went through a value engineering where we, we looked at the costs. And I think we were able to sort of, because we had more detail from our systems, we were able to kind of optimize and get, get down into the details of, of what would, uh, what would be the best for the Montrose community, right? We want this to be a high functioning building that's energy conscious. But we also want to make sure that it's going to be easy to be maintained by those, um, for years to come. So that was another thing too, and that also kicked off sort of the idea of the design assist, which Ty was just mentioning. And, uh, we actually have our kickoff meeting for that today. So that's going to be a very helpful process for our, uh, M E P engineers. So in our construction documents now, and as Riley mentioned, we are due to send out our first bid pack one of, uh, underground utility drawings tomorrow. And that will, um, enable Shaw to, to mobilize a bit earlier as we, uh, kind of finalize the rest of our interior details and work closely with, uh, um, our owner team, um, as we, we do that. So, um, overall, that's kind of the, the design steps that we've, um, taken since about August to get to where we are now. And, um, it's been, um, it's been really great just to have the whole owner team, um, work with us closely as well as the design architect from energy efficiency to, you know, I like to call it the user interface. Like how do you actually use the, the building, making sure that it fits in with, you know, the very downtown lo- location? And really making sure that we're, uh, we're providing a functional building that will, um, meet the needs for today and be agile for the future. So yes, I'm happy to answer any questions as regards to design. But if there are no questions, I will hand it off to Chief Hall, who's been on the front lines ever since the beginning.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shannon. So I'll, uh, I'll kind of wrap it up a little bit just from, uh, police department's perspective and, and operationally what it was that we were, we were looking at. And then just maybe a little bit of, um, perspective on where we were and, and how we got here today. So we knew that after, uh, the voters passed the two A initiative, uh, we were in for, for quite a big challenge. We knew that we needed, um, and Shannon added another fifty years to the building. So now we're at a hundred years. Thanks, Shannon. We knew we, we needed a fifty year building. We knew what we didn't need, which is what we are currently operating in. And you've heard me say this before, we needed a building that would work for us so that we could serve the community and not a building that, uh, was essentially forcing us to work for it. And just the workflow, workflow processes that you have to adapt to in a building that really isn't designed to be a police department in the first place, really is kind of mind boggling. We also knew that we wanted a building that, uh, fit, as Shannon said, with the downtown area and accented the downtown area. We wanted something that was inviting to the community, something that we could separate some of our processes from the front lobby to maybe a different entrance. So that we could, we could keep some of those, um, less than desirable processes outside of view from the, from the general public. And we had a rare opportunity, let's face it, to redesign a, uh, a, a very large section of our downtown community so that again, we could, we could accent it and make the, the new public safety center a welcoming place for, for our community. So all of that combined with wanting to make sure that we kept our costs in line. And then I remember presenting, uh, the M W L, uh, Jim McLaren's services and, and, uh, what he could do for, for us from an architectural, uh, assist standpoint. I think it was on February eighteenth and I remember hearing about this thing called COVID nineteen. And, uh, it's kind of like watching the tidal wave coming at you, um, and you don't really know what to expect. And of course, a year later, here we are and, and we just heard, uh, Shannon and Ty and Riley talk about how COVID has really, um, put some major challenges, um, towards commodities in, in the construction field. So, but we had something that we had to get done and we knew we couldn't do it alone. And I think something that I really want to stress here, and this has not only been with, uh, with M W L and hiring Jim McLaren's group, but, um, also with Blythe and with Shaw is that this wasn't just the city manager and the police chief, um, designing this thing. When, after we hired M W L, the very first thing that M W L did was actually reach out to our employees. And it started with a questionnaire, um, to assess how they worked during the day, what challenges they faced, what they thought, um, their workspace should entail. And really what the next fifty years could bring in the realm of digital forensics, investigations, patrol work, all of those different kinds of things. And then after M W, M W L got all of those surveys in, they then personally went out to our employees in groups and interviewed them to try to refine what those expectations look like. Based on that, they came up with, um, and I may be using the wrong term, kind of a conceptual design of initially what, uh, the building could look like, at least from the inside, uh, from a kind of a workflow perspective. And then after that, uh, we knew that we were, uh, ready. And I apologize Riley, in that whole timeframe, we also hired an owner's rep because we knew we couldn't do this, um, by ourselves and the, the, who, who builds a police building, right? In their, in their lifetime, it's a rare opportunity. And of course, D P M came on and, and they started with all the, uh, requests for qualifications and eventually finding Blythe and both Shaw. And so after Blythe came on, we, uh, we started our schematic design, which led to design documents. And I think we're going to go into construction documents or maybe we, we're getting close there. Um, and it's really amazing to see how the building has, has kind of, like Shannon said, um, kind of come into its own. Operationally though, I've always been concerned about wanting to make sure that the, the building is something that would last us for the next fifty years, would handle our growth. But of course, we had to stay within a, uh, a, a budget. And so, uh, I think Riley mentioned about one million or over one million in, in, um, I don't want to call them cuts. We put them off to the side on a shelf. And I imagine if we were able to, uh, afford those later in contingency, we could bring some of those back. But it's actually one point four million dollars is what we have, uh, essentially put off to the side. There were times during the whole design process where, uh, square footage of the building was cut. And sometimes we agreed with that from a police department perspective and sometimes we didn't. And we'd go back to Blythe and, and say, look, the patrol work area is, it's just too small. And we have to remember that we're designing for fifty years into the future and we know we're going to be hiring more staff well beyond, uh, two A. And so just to kind of give you maybe one more example, to make sure that we could find every penny and, and Blythe and Shaw and D P M have been great. It's the difference between a panel door and a coil door on a garage. And I didn't realize the, the, the cost differences of those two. But a coil door is much more expensive and much harder to maintain than a panel door. Uh, something as simple as we replaced one of the electric gates with a, a person operated gate. Because we knew that we weren't going to, um, we weren't going to use that gate as much. And so we've drilled down to even finishes. We've had to be very careful about that because one thing that Jim McLaren said is that there are some buildings, when you sacrifice on some finishes, five years later, you walk in and it looks like it's a ten year old building instead of, you know, a brand new building. So I would say that if there is the opportunity to bring some things back, some of those more durable finishes like the, uh, flooring of the entry, entryway to the P D would be something that we consider. But that has all led us to here. Uh, there is no fluff in this building. We, it, it really is a building that I think we can all be proud of. I think it fits the downtown area. But it really is also a building that works well for our workflow processes. And, uh, this won't be the last time, but again, I really appreciate, uh, city councils not just support of the project, but actually the, getting into some of the details. I've, I've been asked by Councilor Bowman about Axon, making sure it fits in the interview room, the way the interview rooms operate. And so there really is a concern to make sure that this building works for both, um, our employees and the community. And so thank you very much. And with that, I'll hand it over to Jim.
Yeah, thanks team. Um, so in conclusion, you know, we've taken a few steps to help mitigate some of the risk associated with the cost changes and the unpredictability in the market. One of those steps, like we've talked about as a design assist approach, trying to lock into the estimates we have. Another step is the bid package one and one A that would be going out, uh, starting tomorrow. And, and how that kind of helps, um, speed up the process of locking in those prices again that we know now. And then the third step is this recommendation itself. We're asking for the authorization of up to sixteen million, two hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars to start the construction process. And we would then award that to Shaw's contract, uh, the majority of Shaw's contracts, some of the utilities. And contingencies would stay on the owner's side, but, um, a large portion would be in Shaw's contract. So with that, I'd open up to questions or discussion, uh, about the project. We'd be happy to answer anything you have.
Thanks very much, Jim. Um, what kinds of questions or comments do we have from council? Anything? That was pretty thorough and I think the packet had a lot of good information. Dave?
Uh, the one question I would have is, uh, in order to expedite these contracts being awarded, this is going to come onto our, uh, Saint Regular City Council meeting in two weeks. Does that give you adequate time to be able to really implement these, uh, contracts? And be able to really actually be able to function with the limitations on materials costs? Or would it be a better expedited?
No, I think it does. Two weeks from now works well, um, with, um, the timing of bid package one going out. Shaw's planned mobilization onto site, that this does fit well. And, and it is, uh, it is moving it up the timeline than, uh, what we had anticipated early on was waiting until we had bid, bids received. And, and that would have been, that could have delayed some of that start and possibly added some cost. So I think just going through this process, um, i- is getting ahead of it. And so I think two weeks from now is a, a good time.
Excellent. We just want to be sure we're really efficient in our use of our time and money.
I don't see any other hands. That was great information and really thorough. Appreciate it. Appreciate the whole team being here to, to walk us through that. And if, um, if we think of things in the next two weeks, I mean, I think that's why we also have that luxury of two weeks. Because it's a lot of information for us. It's a lot of information for the public. And, um, we won't be making a final council decision on this, um, until our next scheduled meeting. So, um, sure, there's an opportunity for any follow-up. Thanks for coming this morning. Okay, I'm going to move on to our next item, um, which is kind of ties in. So I don't know if it involves some of the same people or not, um, but it's the right of way vacation ordinance that council will be voting on. And, um, again, Jim, Shai is going to take us through that.
Yeah, this one will be just me. Uh, the team's more than welcome to hang out, but this one is, uh, to clean up, uh, vacation ordinance in related to the same project. So right, right on South First Street, um, just north of the existing police department. We, um, this ordinance is to vacate, uh, the right of way there. And I included some maps within the packet, um, just to help explain the need for that and why we're doing it. So we had vacated a piece of South First early on in this project and this was pre-designed. At that point, we knew there was going to be a community room that was on the front side of the building. We, we didn't know where though, and we had to, um, a- assign boundaries to the project for the financial part of the, of this project. And so that's why it was vacated where it was. As we got into design, um, we started to see, you know, the transition of where that community room, where its location would be. And it was actually outside of the area that we had, uh, vacated. And, um, a lot of the building ended up coming out and encroaching into the right of way on South First. And we, so we saw that early on in the project, um, again, going back to the needs of the building and the department, established that it was, that it was needed there, that we didn't have, we could not push it further to the south. Um, and that it was needed where it was. We waited till this late in the project, um, and designed before bringing this, uh, vacation ordinance to you. Just to be sure that the building wasn't going to move, nothing else was going to change. That, um, we, we knew about time we got to D D phase, uh, that's design development phase of the project, that there wasn't going to be any more, uh, building location changes or adds or deletions. Um, and so that's where we're at now and that's why we're bringing this before you now to, um, for approval. And it would be, um, and, and seeing the, the second map that I included there shows the piece of the building that, uh, encroaches on the, the right of way here. And so with that, I'll take questions, but I think the maps, um, explained the, the need pretty well. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that have come up.
Thank you. No, I think you answered my question, which was, um, it, it might have changed again, but so you answered that one. This is the final.
Yeah, well, this is.
Thank you. Great.
So Jim, for clarification, we're not expanding any further into the depth of South First. All we're doing is expanding it to the east in order to incorporate that extra little bump out for that community room to make sure that we're not encroaching on a right of way. That's correct?
That is correct. So the previous vacation went to the center line of First Street, and so does this vacation. So it, it extends to the north, to the center line of South First, but just further to the east from where the previous vacation was.
I think the maps are really helpful. So if anyone is, is watching, those maps are in the council packet for today's meeting, and those are always available online. Okay. Okay, seeing no other questions on that, I look forward to, we'll see it for a formal council vote at an upcoming council meeting. Next is the contract amendment authorization for construction material testing for the project. So tell us more about this.
Okay, well, yep, same project. This is about the Montrose Public Safety Complex. This is in regard to a contract directly to us as the owner with Huddleston Berry. And this is to add the construction materials testing to their contract. And this is a very common item for an owner-provided consultant. We did award them a contract early on in the project for geotechnical engineering, which they have performed. A lot of times, geotechnical engineering and construction materials testing are procured together. It's similar to maybe a design team where the, a, a design team would, would put together a building plan, and then they would be the one to evaluate that through construction for quality. And so this is very similar. It's a engineering of the soils. And so they did write a soils report and, and engineering for geotechnical. And, and now at this stage, now that we have a drawing package, we were able to put the rates that they provided for inspections to what was actually going to be in the building and quantify that. And that's where we're at now, where we were able to put a dollar amount to the rates they provided in that early procurement. And so it would be a, a not-to-exceed amount based on their hourly rates of up to $205,950. And, and that would be to provide all, all testing and inspection services throughout construction. And some of that's third-party, like steel inspections is usually a third-party inspector. What they would be doing probably initially would be things like observing the installation of the micro pile, or sorry, helical piles and soils testing as we start to work into foundations. So that would be generally their scope is, and it'd be throughout construction. So they would see us from early on in piles all the way through drywall inspections and things like that. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but we are asking for the approval to add this to Huddleston's Berry's contract.
Thank you. Thanks very much. I think the information presented in the packet is good. Any questions or comments from council? Okay, then we'll keep moving on. We look forward to seeing that. Okay. The next thing, Jim, you, you get one more. And that is an asphalt machine purchase recommendation, complete with pictures in our packet. So tell us about this.
Yes. All right. So finally, now talking about the police department, this is a piece of equipment for our streets division. It, it was included, or it is included in our 2021 budget to be replaced this year. We, we have a, an asphalt lay-down machine, but it is problematic in its age and size. It's actually not suited very well for what we use it for, and therefore that ends up not being utilized a lot. So we have budgeted to replace it with a machine that's slightly different. It's much smaller actually than the one we have. And the intention is that we would then be able to use it more, and, and it would better suit what we use it for. So this would is through a cooperative purchasing agreement, which we've, we've had a few of those. A lot of these big pieces of equipment do land into this type of procurement where we're able to piggyback on other awards to government agencies and, and take advantage of some government pricing. And that, that falls into this where we would be awarding to Hanin Equipment for a Vogel Asphalt Lay Down Machine for the total purchase of $169,924. As far as what was budgeted for this product, this piece of equipment, it was budgeted at $155,000, which is less than the cost of the equipment. That was anticipated at budget time, and with that, we actually anticipated saving quite a bit of money due to the size of the equipment we have now and its resale amount that we actually projected by buying this, we would save approximately $50,000 to the fleet fund. And so this being over what we estimated, we still will save approximately $35,000 to the fleet fund. So there's definitely not a budget impact as far as that, because our, our fleet fund will still see a significant savings from this purchase. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. But again, I think the pictures are always best in, in explaining what it is for purchasing.
The picture is appreciated, but can you just give us the quick, what, what do you use a, an asphalt lay, what'd you call it? Asphalt lay-down machine? Can you just tell us how it's used? It's obviously not, it's too big for potholes, but not big enough to do whole street construction, right? Like, so what is it?
It is, you're exactly right. It's right in between those. So it is, this size of lay-down machine is best for patching. Where you may see some of these on larger scales, and even the one we have currently is meant for large, long lane lay-downs. So you may see, if you see a CDOT project where they are paving a road, you'll see one of these right behind a dump truck. So they'll load a dump truck with asphalt and dump into this lay-down machine right behind it, and this kind of follows right behind the dump truck and, and then smooths this out. It lays down a nice flat layer. And so this one is, does the same thing as what you may see on a highway project, but it's smaller and it's meant to do patching, which is what we do primarily in-house. The long lane paving of miles of street is not really what our department does. And so the large machine we have now i- is difficult to use for the smaller localized patching, where we may do a 20-foot by 20-foot patch. We would do it the same way with the, the dump truck with asphalt dumping into this machine, but its size makes it much more versatile for patching, which is what we would use it for.
Okay, thank you. Looks like Rory has a question.
I'm just curious, how and when you'll dispose of the current machine that we have?
We will sell it through gov deals. It was part of the disposal list that was approved earlier this year, and so it's auctioned off on gov deals. And we're able, for larger pieces like this, we're able to set a reserve amount to make sure that it doesn't slip out to somebody for a hundred dollars. This one is, is worth a lot of money. I think somebody that utilizes it for those long-line pavings is a, it's a, a very good piece of equipment for that and should be worth a lot of money. So we were able to put a reserve on it to make sure we, it doesn't by chance go out for a low price.
Good. Yeah, I, I remember that disposal list now, but I had forgotten it at the moment. Thanks.
Great. Thank you very much. And thanks for explaining too, a little bit more about how it's over the specific budgeted amount that you thought it would cost, but it's less than the fleet fund replacement allocation. And when you talk about a fleet fund replacement, that's money that your department has been putting into an account, so to speak, every year, knowing that you were going to replace something at some point. So I think if you were thinking of it from a consumer point of view, it'd be like if just you're saving up for something that you know you're going to need. And what you're saying is you saved up more than enough. You thought you were going to get it for $50,000 less, but really you're getting it for $35,000 less.
That's right.
But I just say the same thing again, but yeah, I just, thanks.
Yeah, you're, you're right on. From the time we buy a piece of equipment, including this asphalt lay-down machine, we immediately start collecting for its replacement. So we anticipate the lifespan of a piece of equipment. This, a pickup truck, let's say, for example, would be a 10-year life. And so immediately the year after we purchase it, we start collecting for its replacement and anticipating that it would have a 10-year life. And that way, in 10 years, we have a, a savings account of sorts through the fleet fund for the replacement of that vehicle. And so the fleet then replaces each vehicle for every division. And it has, it saves up for every, everything, police department and all public works. Every piece of equipment we have is collected in that same way as a savings in the fleet fund.
And that's why we often talk about and distinguish when we buy equipment for the city, if something has a replacement or if it's new. Because if it's a replacement, we, the city have saved up for it. And if it's new addition of equipment, then that's something that needs to be budgeted for separately, and then it will have its, a save-up account to replace that. And I, I think that's just an interesting thing for the public to understand about how the city buys equipment.
Yep, you're exactly right. You said it perfectly.
Thanks for that. Thanks for the explanation. Any questions about this particular machine? Okay, then we'll move on to the next item. So now we move from public works to planning for the rest of our meeting. And we've got item E, which is the Valley Ranch North Edition Annexation. Senior Planner, Amy Sharp. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, madam. Here, I'm going to start with sharing my screen. And we've got three annexations this morning, and they'll all follow the same schedule. So with that being said, this is the schedule for the next three annexations that we're talking about this morning. We'll have Planning Commission on March 10th. All of these will require an annexation impact report as they are all over 10 acres. And then we'll have the first reading for the annexation and zoning ordinance on April 6th, followed by the second reading on April 20th. This map shows the general location of the Valley Ranch Edition North. So this is just south of Ogden Road. It's just south of the bridges. It is approximately 60-plus acres. It's within the city's urban growth boundary, the city of Montrose Water Service Area and City Sewer Service Area. So you can see on this map, the area that's kind of lightly shaded grayish-white, that's city property. And so that area is urbanizing, and it does meet the requirements for annexation. The annexation agreement will be required, and the purpose of this annexation is to allow for future residential development. The zoning of the surrounding area, just north of here is R1A, and there, and then agricultural kind of to the southeast and west. So this project, they're proposing zoning of R3A at the north end of this annexation, and then R2. And then to the south is going to be the next annexation that we talked about following this one. And then this is just an approximate boundary line. So this shows the variety, and it gives the developer a variety of high-density housing going down to lower-density housing as you move further south. This is the official annexation map. According to our comprehensive plan, the land use chapter three, this area is listed as residential mixed density medium, which does allow for a variety of land uses that includes single-family homes, townhomes, duplexes, and triplexes. This is in our growth area two, which just states that there's infrastructure nearby. And this is just a summary of what we discussed. So it is urbanizing, an annexation agreement, and impact report will be required. We will be recommending approval of the annexation and the zoning as requested in this map. I'm open to any questions.
Thank you. What questions do we have from council? I think we're understanding the process of annexation and zoning as we see those come before us. I see some nodding that Amy's really good at explaining that calendar to us. Dave?
So where is the road access drawn off of for this project? Would it be off of Ogden?
Yes.
And it would be going through neighboring properties or along that boundary line on the east edge?
I believe it's on the boundary line. I could pull up our, there's a proposed road that goes through there that's in our comprehensive plan transportation map. I can pull that up as we're discussing if you want to see it, but there is a, and we're going to include that in the annexation agreement that they allow for the right-of-way in that road to travel through that annexation.
I just think if we could see that when it comes before us for our council meeting, that might be helpful, just to make sure we're looking at that long-term transportation impacts.
Sure. I'll put a note to add that map in there for the next one.
Assuming, yeah, but Dave, I would say assuming that, that that is a consideration. You know, we've learned a lot about what we can and can't consider when it comes to this kind of thing. For example, it would kind of be out of our scope to talk about, well, I won't throw out examples without double-checking lawyers, but I, I'm curious as well, but I also know like when we, when we consider something, we're allowed to look at these factors, but not these factors on approving an annexation and a zoning. So I just want to, does that make sense?
It, it does, but I also want to make sure that we are looking at our long-term comprehensive plan components related to transportation, because I think that that has a, might not have a direct impact on approval or disapproval of this project, but it is having a long-term impact on how we're allowing these projects to move forward, if you understand what I'm saying. I just think, I just think having that information on hand, both for ourselves and for the public would be valuable.
Yeah, and I have no problem sharing that transportation map from our comp plan. And like I mentioned, I was just pulling up our annexation agreement that we're working on as part of this project and working with Scott Murphy, you know, on those necessary right-of-ways that are needed for public utility easements and different things for connection to, it says Bridges Drive from Ogden Road to Otter Road. And it'll have, you know, a certain right-of-way to assure that road and public utility easements within that area.
Thank you.
You.
Other questions? I don't see any. So you can move on now to the, the south portion of the, which is a separate item, but it's the Valley Ranch South Edition Annexation.
All right. So same schedule as we just discussed. This is the same developer, same landowner. We're just putting them as two separate annexations, but this one is just south of the one that we just reviewed. This one is just a little over 70 acres. It includes two separate parcels. Parcel one's about 66 acres, the other one's almost four acres. And also it's within the city's urban growth boundary, city of Montrose Water and Sewer Service Area. You can see to the west is within city limits. And also on this one, we'll be requiring the annexation agreement for road and different issues as well, the right-of-way. And then the annexation on this one, same thing, it's going to allow for future residential development. This next slide will kind of put the whole picture together too. So if you think back to the one that we just had, there was R1A to the very north, right along the road. And then the Valley Ranch North Edition had R3A, R2, and now this one's going to be proposed as R1 for both of these parcels. So it'll go from higher density, closest to the main access road, all the way south to R1, which is the lowest density.
Amy, I have a question. It's on the north parcel though. Do you, do we often see R1A next to R3A?
We do sometimes. It's found throughout the city. It's obviously not the most preferred, but we do find that throughout the city. And the owner of the R1A that's directly north of this area, there's three parcels up there. Two of them are owned by the same person as this developer, and some of this R1A is owned by one other additional person.
Okay, that, that helps. Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions, comments? Okay.
I can stay on there if that helps.
Yeah.
No, no, go ahead. Yeah.
Um, the, the section now that would be north of this one and west of the one you just previously talked about, that's going to remain an enclave, and it's not in the city limits. We're creating an enclave then, correct?
Correct. And that's a different landowner. So yeah, you see my cursor?
Yeah.
So this one would be annexed, the one to the south, and this would be annexed, but this parcel, I believe, is what you're referring to, will stay within the county and is a different landowner.
Okay, yeah, that was my question. Thanks.
Sure. Annexation map. This one's also residential mixed density medium, so it can include anything with a variety of single-family homes, townhomes. This one's also residential mixed density medium, so it can include anything with a variety of single family homes, town homes, duplexes and triplexes, just as the area to the north. This one's also within growth area two. And same summary. We'll be doing annexation agreement, impact report, and we will be recommending approval of the annexation in the R one very low density district. Do you want me to leave my maps up? Do you guys have more questions before I stop share?
My, I, my only comment, I just, I'll miss seeing the sheep on my walk on that property, but. I suppose that's, that's what it is. Okay.
It doesn't include all of that property that you see the sheep on, only I think a lot of that's to the. East even of this one.
Yeah.
The point of my granddaughter's day is seeing those sheep.
I can hear them in the spring when they're getting their tails cut off. But anyway, okay. I, I, I'll stop, I'll stop, just ad libbing here. Okay. Any other questions on this piece of property for Amy? I don't see any. Okay, then the next thing is Highway fifty Edition Annexation.
Alright. This one follows the same schedule that we've just discussed on the other two, so I won't go through that in detail as you know it now. And this one is located right along is the right of way on either side of Highway fifty. It's just on East Main between sixty seven hundred Road and sixty six fifty Road. So this is approximately fifteen acres. It's within the city's urban growth boundary, city of Montrose Water and Sewer Service Area. And also surrounded on most sides by. City limits. This map right here, if you guys will remember, we just did an annexation last year or may, yeah, end of last year called the Lynch Edition. So this map hasn't been updated quite yet. It's still, GIS is still working on this, but this area just north of here was the Lynch Edition. And so that was just annexed as well. And so this is kind of a cleanup effort to get the right of way on either side of the highway or the, yeah, the highway here annexed as well. So the zoning of the surrounding area is kind of mixed in this area. We've got B two, B two A, B three, R three, kind of over here to the west side of it. And then agricultural to the north. A proposed zoning, the one that makes the most sense is the B two Highway Commercial District as we find throughout the city along our highway. This is the official annexation map. And then in our comprehensive plan, this is listed as major center, which makes the most sense since this is our highway corridor. It is in with growth area one, just barely. It's in the red here. So that means infrastructure is already in place. There's no, you know, specific development plan for this. Like I said, it's just bringing in the right of way into the city limits. And same thing, this is contiguous to city limits on most sides. We'll be filing an annexation impact report. And we will be recommending the annexation and B two Highway Commercial District for this property.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from council? Doug?
Amy, did we have some information on this before? Have we looked at the same, same segment previously? Cause it seems familiar to me.
Not in my time. We discussed during the Lynch Edition though, the possibility of bringing in this highway right of way. And I might have mentioned at that time that we were going to bring that in as a follow up annexation. So that might be what you're remembering, but we haven't brought this forward yet. As an official annexation, we just discussed that it would be helpful to do after the Lynch Edition was done.
Okay, thank you.
Great. And I don't see anybody else. Okay, then we'll move along. Thank you very much. The next thing on our agenda is on page two. We have a short term rental update from our finance director, Shani Whittenberg. Good morning.
Good morning. So yes, back in two thousand and nineteen, city council approved short term rentals to be included in all zones. As well as changing the definition in our municipal code to include short term rentals. Prior to that, we were licensing short term rentals as they came in to see us. So I, in your packet is a little brief memo along with a. Little matrix that talks about. How many we had licensed, what our net taxable sales were. What that meant for collections at a three percent rate and what that meant at point nine percent, which is our excise tax for lodging, hotels, short term rentals and the like. So with that. In two thousand and nineteen, we had nine licensed and in two thousand and twenty, we actually have fifty licensed. So our. Third party. Software, if you will, for this project is Lodging Revs. They are a sister company to Muni Revs, which is our sales tax collection software. And you can tell from the numbers that they're definitely. Doing their job and helping us out. I think if we did not have Lodging Revs, we probably would have had to hire an employee. So I was talking with Ann last week and, and. Lodging Revs actually has some sort of an algorithm. Or they've got an employee, I'm not sure, that looks for reservation, looks for. Advertisements on these sites. That go up on Friday evening and come down Sunday evening. So if you're a nine to fiver, Monday through Friday. You wouldn't necessarily see these as advertised. So I know this was. A request from council member Dave Bowman. And I'm hoping that I've answered the questions. Doesn't quite look like in two thousand and twenty, our short term rentals did as well as maybe some other communities. But I don't think we are a short term rental destination. Like Moab or Breckenridge. So. With that, I'll entertain any questions or if there's something else you were looking for, please let me know.
Amy, I appreciate the report. That's interesting, interesting information. I'm curious, do we, when. The rental rev sends stuff out to. Somebody that they find online that is got an STR but isn't signed up with us. What's the percentage of, of people reacting to that and signing up? Or do some people ignore it or how does that work?
I would say it's a pretty high percentage. Lodging Revs does that initial reach out, but then they then become. An application in our Muni Rev software. So they're getting reminders from us. On a pretty regular basis to finish their licensing. And then also they have to, they're required to post their sales tax license online. So I think that piece helps us as well with, with compliance.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think it'll be interesting to see how those numbers change in the next couple of years, because we've had some weird. I mean, obviously we just got it started and then two thousand and twenty was really, really weird with the. I think personally, a lot of short term rentals in Montrose get used for extended family for things like graduations. And holidays and we saw those really kind of not getting celebrated in the full extended family way in two thousand and twenty. So interesting data points, but I'm not sure what it really tells us or gives us a full story yet. So kind of looking forward to seeing what that looks like for twenty one and twenty two. And I do think just going back to why we did this. I do think this is really fair to our hotel owners and creating the same tax across the board for hotels. That, that applies also to short term rentals. I think that's important.
Yeah, definitely. I'll put it on my calendar to. Remind myself to do a similar report in February of two thousand and twenty one or twenty two.
That would be, that would be really great. Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is. A similar kind of report card and this time it's for our public safety sales tax, the two A. And I'll turn it over to Police Chief Dwayne Hall.
Hi, City Council. Thank you. So this is our first two A report card for two thousand and twenty one. And I'll just go through it and then certainly answer any questions. You can see many of the.
Can you share your screen by any chance? I think this is just really well done and a lot of information, if that's possible.
Yes.
It is in the packet, all this information's in the packet, but for anyone watching, it's, it's kind of nice to have it right in front of you.
Absolutely. Let me share my screen here.
Sorry, I put you on the spot, chief.
No, that's okay. It's some technical stuff and I think I can do it. Alright, how's that look? Good to go. Okay. So again, you can see that many of the boxes are starting to be filled, especially in staffing. We still have a ways to go. But we, we're into. The two A side as far as our staffing levels are concerned in our patrol officers. Also in our detectives and then this last. Two semesters, if you will, at Centennial Middle School, Jeremy Payne was. Transferred into an SRO position and my understanding is. They love him and for all of those of you who know Officer Payne, how could you not love him? So it's been a really good transition. In that area. As far as the facility goes, the new PD building, you, you just got to hear a, a great presentation in that regard. We're ninety five percent complete in the building design, seventy five percent complete in site prep. And then we are, of course, site demolition is completed. In some of the improvements, and then I have some others that I haven't listed here, but I'll tell you about some upcoming things as well. Our hiring and our training, we've got three police officers currently in training and then. We have four police officers in the, in the CMU Academy in Grand Junction for cadets, as you call them. And then it kind of leads into this summer. We still have plans to put on a summer police academy in partnership with CMU and also the Montrose County Sheriff's Office. We've submitted all of our lesson plans to the post board and we are waiting for them to be reviewed. The driver's training track in Grand Junction that we plan on utilizing. Has been approved by post and then we purchased a multitude of different pieces of training equipment for the academy. We have run into some challenges for sure. I think that the. Post and their bandwidth to review academies right now is severely challenged with some other academies that were in front of us. And also with the COVID situation. And so we're trying to work through that right now, but our plan is to still host a summer police academy. As far as equipment and officer safety items. We purchased something called Axon Signal, which goes right along with the body cameras. So it's a little magnet and right now we're kind of in a testing phase to make sure it doesn't. Go off for a different reason. But it's a magnet that fits on the holster of the police officer. And so when the police officer. Draws their firearm, the body camera automatically activates. So it's. Frankly, it's awesome for our police officers. If you can imagine being just involved in a, a critical incident or a shooting. And all the things going through your mind and having to remember, you should, but having to remember to turn on your body camera. Is just another, another thing that our officers won't have to worry about. The camera will automatically come on when the gun is drawn. Automatically come on when the taser is activated. And so those are, those are just great things to have. We have also purchased some theft investigation technology. And then also some, some crowd control and safety equipment for our police officers. I think this last year in the beginning of two thousand and twenty one has showed us that we all should be prepared. To, to be able to manage incidents that, that may suddenly pop up or may become violent. And so that includes purchasing. Shields and helmets for our police officers. However. Those same pieces of equipment are also ballistic rated. So. We'll be giving those to our patrol officers and they can also take them into schools and during times of. Possibly an active shooter or something along those lines. So kind of dual purpose equipment. And then we've been working with our OBT team. They've got a great team and we're moving forward with a plan to. Better, I guess, inform the public from our social media. Platforms on different prime trends, fraud alerts. And then if you follow our Facebook page, you'll see some of the awesome PR stuff we're doing like. I guess Apple was dressed up as Cupid this last weekend. So that was, that was kind of cool this morning. I know Shannon is helping us post a missing person. Alert for Montrose. So with that, that's kind of what we've got going. We're in the process right now of purchasing. A product from Lexa Poll that is a online community crime reporting tool. And so for those individuals who want to report a crime online now. They can do it from their computer, from their phone, or once. We get through COVID or probably with the new lobby of the new building, we'll have a report taking kiosk where. A citizen will be able to file a report right at a computer screen if they want to come in. That doesn't mean that they can't talk to a police officer if they request one. We'll certainly respond to those requests as well. And then we're currently researching and about to purchase protective bumpers for, for our patrol cars or most of our newer patrol cars. Especially, this was kind of in response to the incident we had last year. Critical incident where we had a driver of a U-Haul van try to run over one of our police officers. So. With that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Chief, I have a question about that online report taking. Sometimes you're told by maybe your insurance company or I, I know there's been a lot of fraud with unemployment benefits. You're told to make a police report. And, and would this allow a citizen to just go online and make that police report so they have the document that they? They did report that their, their bike was stolen or they did report that there has been a unemployment fraud on their, attached to their name. And just get it done, get it taken care of. They don't necessarily need to talk to someone one on one. Is that what you're talking about?
Yep, you, you hit it right on the head. So it'd be for low level crimes, certainly when your identity is stolen. It's not a low level crime and we understand that, but oftentimes. You're busy, you're moving through your day, you need to get this process going. And so that's exactly what this, this crime reporting software is for, is to, for you to be able to do that. It's for essentially crimes where you may not have a lead. And you know, it, your bike is stolen or some type of fraud occurs and you need it for your insurance company. The flip side to that is it also. It'll be a benefit for our patrol officers in the fact that. They, if a citizen chooses to use this, then they won't be using their time to do that. And it'll be more time on the street where hopefully we can be a bit more proactive.
Right, and there would be follow up as needed to that. Similar to reporting something to Public Works where you see something out, you can just quickly do it online, let them know that there's a problem and they can address it. Contact you if necessary.
Correct.
It kind of expedites everything.
It does expedite it, but everyone should know that. Well, once that report is filed in this system, it communicates with our records management system. So it's not like the report kind of goes into. You know, this black hole and it's never looked at again. It actually goes into. Our normal RMS system. And so a sergeant then, no different than let's say a police officer typed report, sent it to the sergeant for review. Now the citizen is reporting the crime, sends it off and it actually goes into the sergeant's inbox. And so the sergeant will review that. Now the citizen may say. Or may think there's nothing that can be done, but of course, a lot of times they don't know what we know. We may have a lead on exactly what happened two doors down. And so the sergeant will be able to assign that to, through our review process. So it, it's not, it won't even be a citizen requesting follow up, which could happen. But it will actually be our, our normal standard report review process and those leads will be assigned out either to patrol or to detectives.
That is great to know. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other questions from council about this report card on how two way monies have been spent so far, Dave?
My question was just kind of, are we getting any word back from the Post, Colorado Post about? Timeline? I know they, they're really. I know they're really behind on approval. Are they keeping in touch with us about where our process is so that we know at least kind of whether or not we can start booking those summer academy reservations?
Yeah, no, they are. They are being very good about communicating with us and being very realistic about what they believe their timeline is. We actually have a meeting later on today with Derek Wagner from CMU and with the AG's office, who kind of oversees Post, to talk about that timeline and what we can do to make sure that our academy starts up in the summer. As far as advertising and those kinds of things, we probably will be challenged with the short, I guess, timeframe, if you will. But as you know, and as you can see here with our 2A report card, we have many positions that we need to fill. And we have, we have a multitude of what appear to be very good candidates, both post-certified and non-post-certified, that we can put into an academy. And so this first go-around, maybe we only have nine students in the academy, which may be okay too, because it's our first academy. But we're just trying to juggle many different things. And it's been a challenge. Billy Stroup's been doing a great job. He's our academy director. He's on it every day. But we do have a larger meeting today with the AG's office and CMU to make sure that we're doing everything we can, and then hopefully push this process along.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I am seeing some shaking heads, meaning no. So I think, Chief Hall, that you have answered all of council's concerns and questions at the moment. Thank you very much. And perhaps you two can put maybe a tickler on your calendar, and we can see this again in four to eight months. I don't necessarily think we want to wait a whole year, because I just think this is really important.
Yeah, no, we definitely want to, we want to try to share this quarterly. I think that would be appropriate.
Okay.
You know, COVID's been a kind of a challenge lately, but we will definitely share this quarterly. Thank you.
Great, that, then yeah, if you would put a reminder on your calendar for three months from now to share an update, that would be great. Thank you very much.
Is there an age limit on going to this academy?
You know what, Doug? There is not an age limit going to this academy. So if you want to apply, your application will be welcome.
There is a running limit on there.
I was going to say, there's a 40 time that you have to meet or something.
You've got to be able to actually run to the end of your driveway and back.
Well, you're going to have to do some Olympic lifting with Jeremy Payne. That will be part of it.
Thank you very much for the update, Chief. Okay, next we move on to general city council discussions, followed by staff comments. Sometimes those kind of blend together, but I'll start with my fellow councilors. Anyone have anything on the top of their mind they want to talk about? Mr. Frank?
Yeah, the CMU Advisory Board met, and we met with Dr. Tim Pino. And he was discussing the search for the new director of the Montrose campus, as well as the search for the actual president of the university. And just letting us know that they're on top of it. They are really, have some good candidates, and that we're moving forward on that. And that the campus, both in Montrose and Grand Junction, are really taking COVID very seriously. And that they have had very good response from both staff and students to comply with all of those. So our local campus is doing very well. And we're just looking forward to continuing to get past these COVID restrictions on class sizes. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that update. Other councilors have any updates or anything that want to? Okay, I'm seeing nope. I will move on to staff. In no particular order, do we have any managers or department heads who want to give council an update about anything? I am not seeing a lot, so...
I can talk a little bit, if you want me to, about the progress at the restaurant at Black Canyon Golf Course.
That'd be great.
We have had a team of the golf pro, assistant golf pro, Ann and I, as well as OBT and HR and finance, trying to get the restaurant ready as far as ordering, inventory. We had some issues with black mold in the bar itself. There must have been a leak several years ago, so we replaced the entire high-top bar area. And some renovations like that, that are minor in nature, but necessary to reopen. And our goal is to be up and running by March 15, thanks to the clerk's office as well for liquor license transfer process, making that smooth for us and that type of thing. The construction inside, I think Tom Young wants to, if he hasn't already, put up brown paper blocking all the windows, and then blocking public access into that construction area. So when it's all done, he can unveil it and have an exciting opening for people. So they don't really know the final product until we take down the paper and they go in. So everybody's doing a lot of work and put a lot of time. We've had at least four hours a week where we meet and talk about details, whether it's the logoing, the menu design, hiring staff, restaurant manager, those types of things. So I just wanted to give everybody an update. That's moving along, and our goal is mid-March.
Does this restaurant have a name yet that we-
It does. Yep, they actually put out to the members, not members, but the pass holders of Black Canyon Golf Course, and took some input from the community and city staff members. And the highest ranking name was The Rusty Putter. And so the name of the restaurant will be The Rusty Putter. And thanks to Kaylee, she's done a lot of work on the graphic design for us and really doing a great job partnering with InDesign to get cool sign put up inside and outside. I think it's going to be really fun.
Great. Thanks for that update. Appreciate it. Anybody else on staff? Doesn't look like there is, but I'll wait a second. I learned in a meeting recently that if you sit here quietly for a few seconds, which I'm not very good at, that someone will eventually have something they want to say. They were just waiting for me to stop talking. Roy?
Yeah, so I got something for Bill. I was just curious, as you were talking about the golf course restaurant. I've always enjoyed eating outside on that patio area. And I wondered if there's any intent, are you going to change anything? Do any special work to that area of the future restaurant?
So the patio is really popular with a lot of people. With the construction, we'll be able to seat about 52 inside, and about the same, almost the same outside. And outside's been really popular this last year, especially with COVID and outdoor seating. We had the sails put up last year. It created a nice ambiance. But we found that there were hornets making nests in some of the planter boxes. And so there'll be some improvements to that, just to make sure it's a little safer and more comfortable for people. And then Tom's working on a new display board outside for scoring and those types of things. And just making sure the outside, because we really think that's going to get a lot of use this spring, make sure the outside is just a beautiful place to hang out. So a few minor improvements, but it was pretty good last year.
Yeah, well, thanks.
Doug?
Yeah, Bill, have you got any idea on what the hours of operation will be?
We don't want to release that yet, because we're right now in the process of determining that. So I'll just tell you what we're thinking so far, but it's definitely going to change. Because we're taking the hours that Tom and his staff are recommending based on the needs of the golfers, whether it's evening, you know, finishing of the men's golf club, and then they want to eat afterward, or if it's morning with the ladies' club. And so one advantage of the city running the restaurant is we can cater the hours to the needs of the golf community, not a private business owner or something like that. So they'll definitely change, but right now, we're looking at, in the spring, having a set of hours that are a little later in the morning. So around, lunch would be at 11:00. But we would have take-and-go items for breakfast, like breakfast burritos and those types of things, earlier than that at 9:00 AM. But then on the morning of ladies' club, for instance, that would move up to 8:00 AM. And so it's just catered and changes based on the day of the week. And then Friday, Saturday, Sunday would be full hours, which would be 8:00 to 8:00. So when we're on full schedule, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. If the indoor simulator that they're putting in, which is to provide us year-round revenue in the winter months and spring and fall, if that goes gangbusters, then we might stay open until 9:00 PM, for instance. Or on the evening of men's club, if they get down and they want to have steak night and hang out, we might stay open until 9:00. But just a general guide would be 8:00 to 8:00. Make it easy for everybody to remember, seven days a week, once we're in full season.
Dave?
Well, I just want to mention, I'm aware, I guess, there won't be any large gatherings at Black Canyon Golf Course this summer. I'm not sure exactly what that means, but I've got a good idea.
Yeah, we, well, the summer music series letter that you received, probably. So with COVID and not knowing the future, what that holds this summer, we've been working with Kara at the Pavilion on what that means for the Pavilion. And then how do we handle large community events, large community gatherings? We're talking about 4th of July, and we need to get input from council members on that. Whether we should do fireworks? If you can do that, you can maybe do it by family unit, make sure people just sit by family unit. Well, it's hard to do that for a large concert where we, so we sent out a letter, I think it was last week Lisa sent it out, just saying that due to uncertainty of COVID and us taking over the restaurant and not knowing exactly how we're going to staff it and how we're going to operate it, we didn't feel comfortable committing to hosting a large music venue. Knowing that no community events in the city will be done fully in person, probably through all of summer is what we're learning, even with the color changes and stuff. With a space calculator, you have to have a really large space to have a significant number of people. And in a venue, like a music venue, it's really hard to control those numbers. Where if it's something else where you can sit people in groups and control it with an access point, that's why 4th of July is even difficult. So we haven't committed one way or the other on 4th of July. Working with groups like All Points, that does Oktoberfest, about moving it out of Centennial Plaza. And if they can do a controlled beer garden area and limit the number of people that buy tickets, maybe that could be, take place down in the park, or something like that. But it's really up in the air. And we could use some advice, frankly, from council members and the community on how we go ahead and hold events this year under the rules of the space calculator. Because that's, right now, we have a couple in-house experts. Kara at the Pavilion is very well-versed in the space calculator, Ann, Harry. And then I know Barbara probably is as well, from her serving on the committee statewide. So any advice, just give me a call or text me, and shoot an email, and let me know what your thoughts are on some of those things. Because we want to make sure that we're being compliant as a city, and we're keeping the community safe. But we would really love to get back into community events.
I think it's just really hard right now, because we don't have any control over that, unfortunately. It makes it very difficult for us to make projections on that.
Right, we're really, yeah, we're really hoping for the amphitheater. If it gets done in October, a little bit early, that it would still be warm enough to hold something to celebrate the opening of the amphitheater. And maybe by that, late in the year, we'll be able to do something. We don't even know that, and that's scheduled October, November.
I think I can speak for everyone when I say I miss those large events. I know from the state, the plan is to have one more version of the COVID dial, so to speak, with capacities and colors before it goes away completely. But I don't think anyone knows if that goes away completely, happens in August, November, or next year. But the plan is to have that go away completely as soon as possible. And that really takes people getting vaccinated so that we can get out of this situation. Okay. That, any other comments or questions from council or staff about any issues? Okay, I find the silence really uncomfortable, but I've been told if I just do it, someone will say something eventually. Okay, we got nothing else this morning. Okay, in that case, then, we do have our regularly scheduled city council meeting at 6:00 PM tonight. If you all who are panelists, council, and staff can remember to log on a few minutes early, so you can be promoted to a panelist, and we'll get started right at 6:00. We don't have a youth counselor joining us tonight. When I thought we had a really long meeting scheduled, I excused them. And so we don't have someone, so one of us will need to say the pledge of allegiance. And I'm sure we can figure that out. Just log on a few minutes early, and we'll get ready for our meeting at 6 o'clock tonight. Thanks, everybody.